I'd like to call a order the West Covina Planning Commission for Tuesday, April 23rd, at 7:02 PM. Would you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Castellanos?
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you please remain standing for a second for a moment of silence for those victims in the Boston bombing? We have roll call, please.
Mr. Vias. Commissioner Menefee.
Here.
Commissioner Castellanos.
Here.
Commissioner Holtz.
Here.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Blackburn.
Okay, do we have any changes or additions to the regular meeting minutes of April 9th, 2013?
I'd move approval as presented.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Menefee.
Actually, let me, that's the consent calendar that you're referring to. We have two items on there, so let me cover those and you can make a motion and approve both in one vote.
The consent and the minutes?
The forthcoming, I'm sorry, I'm out of order. Go ahead, go forward.
Okay, so a motion to approve by Commissioner Menefee, and second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Vallas. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, this brings us to oral communications. This is a time when any member of the public may speak to the commission on any matter within the scope of duties assigned to the commission. Other matters included on this agenda may be addressed when that item is under consideration. For all oral communication, the chairperson may impose reasonable limitations on public comments to assure an orderly and timely meeting. The Ralph M. Brown Act limits the planning commission and staff's ability to respond to public comments at this meeting. Thus, your comments may be agendicized for a future meeting or referred to staff. The commission may ask questions for clarification if desired at this time. By policy of the commission, excuse me, oral communications at this timing agenda is limited to a total of 15 minutes. Persons who are not afforded the opportunity to speak at this time may do so under Item E later on the agenda. I have two speaker cards at this time. First one is Geneva Wood. Would you please come up to the podium? Pull the microphone a little bit towards you. Okay, there you go.
I just noticed that sign about this meeting tonight, just a couple days ago, nothing about it before, and I thought that it pertained just to the little lot on the even side of the street. And now tonight I find out that they want to build a huge building on the, it would be 131 North Lang.
I think she's wanting to speak on the public hearing item. Chairman Holtz.
Want to wait till the public, okay. Okay, we're going to have that on the agenda and it'll give you time to speak at that time. Okay, and the next person, Paul Lozano, and it's the same thing. If you want to wait till it's on the agenda and we can speak at that time. Does anybody else wish to speak at this time? Come on up.
The same issue.
Same issue? Okay, well, I ask you to fill out a card, anybody who wants to speak, so we have your name. Okay, so no other comments? Come on up.
I'm pretty much the same issue. Just give it a process.
So the same issue?
Yes.
Nobody else wants to speak on any other issue at this time? Okay. Okay, the consent calendar, did you want to say something on that, Jeff?
Yeah, I was eager to speak on that. On the consent calendar, we have two items. We have the forthcoming, which tells you of the items that are upcoming on the next meeting. We do have some items for the May 14th meeting. We will not be having a May 28th meeting. They're going to be doing some construction here in the chambers, so that won't meet, we will not be having a meeting that night. Also, on the consent, we have an extension of time request for conditional use permit number 1015. That is a conditional use permit on a single-family house to add to that house, was approved in March of 2011, and it was extended last year in 2012, and there's another extension request that's being requested this year for an extension to next year, 2014.
Okay, any comments from the commission on those items? None? Okay, okay, so we'll just receive and file then?
You need to make a motion for the consent, for the consent calendar.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion from, second from Menefee. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, that makes us to item number three. This is the extension of time conditional use permit number 10-15. The applicant is Miguel Garcia.
Chairman Holtz, we just covered that under the.
Oh, you covered that one?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry about that. Okay, we're on item four. This is administrative use permit number 13-04, categorical exemption, class-one existing facilities. The applicant is Scott Manchin, Martial Arts Schools and Zumba Dance Studios. Location 350 South Glendora Avenue. Can we hear a staff report, please?
Yes, our planning intern, Sophia Tatley, will be presenting that report.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. I present to you today administrative use permit 1304 related to the use of a martial arts school and zumba studio within a service commercial zone. The applicant, Scott Manchin, is proposing to operate a martial arts school and zumba dance studio at 350 South Glendora Avenue. Martial arts instruction will be available to youths five through 18 years of age and adults, as well as zumba dance studio for adults. The proposed hours of operation is the following: 8:30 to 10:30 a.m. and 4:30 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. Monday through Friday; 8:30 a.m. to 10:30 a.m. on Saturdays; the business will not be open on Sundays. The martial arts and zumba classes will be held exclusively of one another. The existing tenant space is 1,653 square feet in area and has designated seven parking spaces based on retail parking requirements. The applicant indicated the martial arts school and zumba dance studio will consist of a maximum of one to two employees and 20 youth students or 12 adult students to be present on the site at any one time. The planning department received emails indicating concerns during the noticing period from addresses within the Glendora shops and residential areas within West Covina. These communications expressed several concerns such as the following: The martial arts school will reduce the amount of parking spaces available for retail customers; there is another martial arts studio operating within the Glendora shops area. Staff recommends the planning commission adopt a resolution approving administrative use permit number 1304. This concludes staff's presentation. I would be happy to answer any questions the commission may have. Also, the applicant is present and available to answer any additional questions pertaining to the proposal.
Any questions of staff? None? Okay, I have one. Isn't this an existing location by the same individual?
No, I don't, we know what the previous use was.
Well, because when I went there today, it's the same name on the door.
Yeah.
It's painted there, and the same name of the business, and it has the same.
They've already sort of set up shop there, so they're not moving in, they've already sort of moved in, but this is the approval to allow them to.
Because it looked like they were already in business, that's why I was wondering. So this is a brand-new applicant?
Correct.
Thank you. Okay, no questions of staff? Okay, okay, this opens up the public testimony. Anybody wish to speak on behalf of the applicant? Or does the applicant wish to speak?
Good evening, my name is Scott Manchin. For Manchin Martial Arts. I'm here tonight to ask your approval for the granting of the application permits. My business will not impact the parking because we are closed during the peak hours. We operate a few hours in the morning and primarily in the evening when my neighbors close down.
Okay, are you going to allow people to come in the back entrance and park in the back also?
Yes, staff is instructed to park at the back and also if, when we get students.
Thank you. Any questions of the applicant?
I just have one question.
Yes.
So you didn't have a permit for the business prior to setting up shop?
No, it was, what ended up happening, when I contacted the city to obtain a business license over the phone, went through the whole process, came down happy to do it, and then found I needed the permit. That was after I signed the lease, started moving in, so here we are in step two.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone wish to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I'll close it to public testimony and open it up to commission discussion. You'd like to start?
At this point, I don't have any. I'm satisfied with it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Menefee?
Yes, all right.
Commissioner Castellanos?
No, I don't have any opposition to competition in business, so not much else to say.
Okay, I agree, it's, I assumed that it was business that was there already, and there seems to be the hours won't impact the parking there, and also they can park in the rear of the area, so I don't think it'll be a concern. And nobody's here to speak against it, so I guess there, other than, you did say we had a letter, a couple of letters? Okay, how many did we get?
I don't know the exact number, but.
Maybe about eight?
Approximately.
And they were from the other business owners in the area?
Primarily one other business owner and patrons of that business owner.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll close it to commission reports, and can we have a motion to approve? Motion by Castellanos, second by Menefee. All in favor?
Let me give you the reso number there.
And we need the resolution number?
Yeah, the resolution number is 13-5509. And then you can go ahead and take the vote again if you don't mind.
Okay. We have a motion to approve, resolution number 13-5509.
Motion.
Motion by Castellanos, second by Menefee. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 4-0. Good luck with your business. Brings us to item number five. This is precise plan, excuse me, number 13-01, variance number 13-04, categorical exemption, applicant Amar Lapsy for Cottage Development Incorporated. Location 131 and 122 North Lang Avenue. The request is for approval of a precise plan to allow the conversion of a 14,450-square-foot warehouse office building to a medical office facility and construction of a parking lot. Additionally, the applicant is requesting a variance from certain standards, including parking and setback standards. The project is in a neighborhood commercial zone. May we hear a staff report, please?
Yes, associate planner Ron Garcia will be presenting that report.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the commission. The applicant is requesting the approval of a precise plan to allow the conversion of a 14,450-square-foot warehouse office building to a medical office facility, as well as construction of a parking lot. In addition, a variance has been requested to deviate from the parking and yard standards. The subject properties are located at the intersection of North Lang Avenue and West Harbert Street, directly north of the I-10. This is an aerial of the proposal. This is the existing warehouse office building proposed to be converted, and this is the vacant lot proposed to be a parking lot. The subject property is currently developed as a two-story warehouse office building and a vacant lot. The property has been maintained and used as a warehouse office building. The subject property includes a driveway approach on Lang Avenue here and on Orange. Parking is located along the northerly property, abutting single-family zone, which is located along the property line here. The proposed floor plan includes a main lobby area, exam rooms, urgent care, pediatrics, and a pharmacy on the first floor, as well as administrative offices, and an employee lounge on the second floor. The floor plan and specific types of medical uses will likely vary over time. Three new 25-foot-tall entryways are located on Orange, Lang, and the center of the building facing the parking lot. Those located, there would be a main entryway located here off of Lang. There would be a main entry located off of Orange, as well as an entryway located at the center of the building facing the parking in this area here, as well as an opening in this area as well. The proposed parking lot is directly east of the subject property. A total of 38 parking spaces are proposed. The parking lot drive approach is located on Lang Avenue. The two drive approaches located on Harbert Street will be removed and replaced with curb, excuse me for the presentation here. This is a proposed parking lot, a total of 38 spaces are proposed. Again, this is Harbert Street and Lang. There are two existing driveway approaches off of Harbert, which will be, supposed to be closed off, and the main entryway for the parking lot would be off of Lang here. The zoning code requires a total of 75 spaces for the proposed project. On-site parking consists of 30 spaces, and off-site parking, again, consists of 38 spaces. The applicant is proposing a total of 68 spaces. The proposed development, therefore, would have a deficit of seven total parking spaces. The requested consideration to deviate from the parking requirements would be covered in the staff report later. The traffic consulting firm of Koonsman Associates prepared a traffic analysis for the proposed project. The study examined current weekday and weekend average and peak-period traffic generation at the subject site. In summary, the proposed medical office building AM peak hour trips would be 37 trips. The PM peak hour trips for the proposal is a total of 116, for a total vehicle trip for the project of 451 trips. The traffic analysis found that the proposed imaging, excuse me, the proposed medical office building resulted in 451 new daily trips, again, 37 weekday AM peak hour trips and 116 weekday PM peak hour trips. The study concludes that the proposed project will not result in any significant weekday peak hour traffic impacts. In addition to the traffic study that was prepared, an always-stop warrant analysis was prepared by the consulting firm. The analysis evaluated the intersections of North Lang Avenue and West Harbert Street, again, which is indicated on the slide here, Harbert and Lang. The city requested the analysis to determine if the three-way stop is warranted at that intersection. The analysis found that the area, intersection pedestrian volume will increase with the addition of the proposed parking lot, and the existing speed of vehicles within the residential area currently exceeds the residential district's speed limit. A condition of approval has been included in the precise plan, requiring that the applicant submit a request to the city's traffic commission for consideration of adding a three-way stop at the intersection. As indicated previously, there are two variances that the applicant is requesting. The first is to deviate from landscape yard standards and parking. The municipal code requires that a five-foot-wide landscape area be provided along the property line of commercial lots, and the code requires a six-foot landscape buffer be installed where residential properties are adjacent to commercial development. Now, those yard standards, the applicant is requesting where that landscape planner is located is along Harbert. Again, the code requires five feet. The applicant is requesting to deviate from that to maximize the number of parking spaces for this vacant lot. The second variance for yard is along the northerly property line where the parking spaces are located, which is abutting residential zone properties. Again, the code requires a six-foot landscape buffer, and again, the applicant is requesting to deviate from that requirement. Grinding a variance, again, will allow the applicant to develop the parking lot parcel and also to maximize the number of parking spaces. The grinding of the variance for the medical building site will allow for the site layout to remain in its current configuration in that it's existing. Second, parking. The applicant, again, is requesting that variance to deviate from the parking required. In summary, the zoning code requires medical office uses to provide a greater number of parking spaces per square foot than administrative office, as a medical office typically generates higher turnover. Based on the proposal of the conversion of the building, the proposal would require 75 parking spaces where 68 are provided. Given the existing building and the parking layout, the site does not have the ability to create additional onsite parking. Although not allowed to be included in the parking calculations, off-street parking is available. Staff estimated a total of 12 off-street parking spaces were present at the site. The medical office building is in compliance with the zoning standards with the exception of parking and minimum yard standards. Given the size and shape of the lot, staff believes that there are exceptional circumstances on the subject property and the parking lot. The subject property is existing and has been designed to be compatible with the commercial buildings in the vicinity. The proposed parking lot will replace a vacant, underutilized lot. The conversion of the warehouse office building to a medical office will provide additional medical services to the residents of the area. Staff recommends that the planning commission adopt resolutions approving the precise plan and the variance. That concludes staff's presentation. The applicant is present, as well as the, a staff member from the engineering department, if you have any further questions.
Is there any further questions of staff? Commissioner Menefee?
Mr. Garcia, when you count parking spaces, do you, do you take into consideration the street parking along Lang and Harbor?
As indicated in the staff report, the code does not allow for, to count off-street parking spaces. The only, the parking that is required has to come from the property itself.
Yeah, maybe I just don't understand, off-street parking, I'm talking about street parking. Is that, you're talking about the same thing?
Yes, yes.
All right, okay. Okay, it's just terminology.
Off-site parking or onsite parking, yeah. So the code says they're supposed to provide their own onsite parking.
Got it, okay.
Anyone else?
I have another one about the setbacks. You mentioned that there was, there weren't the sufficient setbacks, but you didn't tell us, how much variance are they looking for?
So the variance that they're looking for specifically, especially, specific to the variance request along the northerly property line, the code requires that a six-foot landscape buffer be provided when adjacent to residential zone properties.
Yes.
Currently, the set, the landscape buffer is five foot, six inches.
So we're talking about six inches difference?
Correct.
And the other?
And the other, which is off of Harbert, the code requires that a five-foot landscape buffer be provided along Harbert. There, the code, there the applicant is proposing a five-foot, six-inch. Now, let me be, let me be specific on that. Even though it's providing five foot, six inch.
Yeah, three foot, six inches. Thank you.
You cannot, the project cannot account for the two-foot overhang, which is required for the depth of the parking space. So you can't account for that landscape buffer, even though it is, it looks like it's a larger landscape buffer, but two feet of that is being taken for the depth of the parking spaces that are located, these parking spaces that are here.
Right, okay, thank you.
Anyone else? I have a few questions. On the, on the east wall of that parking there, where there's homes or something behind it, is there going to be a wall there?
There isn't a wall there.
Right.
Why do you say the applicant is not proposing a wall?
There's no wall there now?
There is a wall. We made it a wall and it's not a wall.
And how high is that wall now?
I was thinking it's approximately five to six feet. It's not residential.
Okay.
And also, to be clear, that is correct, it's not residential zone property.
Okay. The other thing on the, where the building is, that other slide where the actual building is, can you bring that up? On the north wall there, where you said it's five foot, six inches high, right now? On the bottom, on the north end, right, yeah, there. Yeah, so there are only, there are only six inches out of variance, is that what you're saying?
No, that's not a wall, it's the masking of it.
Okay, because behind that wall, even though it's residential right there, there's a, some type of limo company right there, there's a big bus back there and some limousines and all that, so it looks like it's kind of used for a combination commercial residential, that particular lot. I don't think it goes all the way through to Orange, so it probably only goes halfway through.
For the purpose of our discussion, that lot is zoned residential?
It is residential, and they are allowed to keep the limo buses and all that there?
I guess I'd reiterate, say it's zoned residential.
It is.
Typically, those types of activities are not.
I just was wondering, because I saw the big tour bus there and all that. What else did I have? On the seven, on the 68 spaces that they're going to provide, do we have any idea how many of those will be used by the employees?
From what the applicant has proposed and indicated, that the off-street parking spaces of, the proposed parking lot would be utilized for employees first, to allow parking spaces where the subject, where the medical office building would be used for patients, patronizing the services there.
Okay, do we have any estimates on how many patients would be there in a day versus how many employees? So we know what the total volume would be for the parking spaces?
I think that might be a better question for the applicant to respond to, so no, we don't know what numbers, and keep in mind, this is a use that will change over time, but, but the applicant probably has an idea of how many patients might be there and how many doctors and employees might be there.
Okay, and then, just to verify, I think on the side streets there, that there's no parking on Tuesdays for street sweeping, so that would impact any off-street parking. Okay, let's see if anything else there. No, I guess that's it. Oh, okay, Commissioner?
Just one more question. As far as the vacant lot, how long has that been vacant?
I'm not aware of how long it's been, but it's been.
About 15 years.
Yeah, it's been a long time. I know there was a fire there at one time, that lot. Okay. And there won't, there's no wall required on, on Lang on the west side, right? Am I, pardon?
That is correct.
So there's no wall?
The applicant is proposing, it doesn't look as large, but the applicant is proposing a small landscape planner on Lang, but a wall.
Well, hold your comments. Okay, any other questions? Commissioner Vallas?
Yes, I have a question. Is the warehouse being used right now, or is it empty?
Yes.
That would probably be a question you want to ask the, what the current status is from the applicant?
As far as we know, it's being used now, but the applicant might be able to respond to that, because they've been in touch with the current property owner.
Okay.
Can I comment? It is being occupied by a business right now. It used to be Speed Automotive years ago that was in there, and they went out of business, and this new electrical, solar type of company is in there right now.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, staff? Okay, I'm going to open up the public testimony. Would the applicant like to come up and? I'm going to open up the public testimony with the applicant, like to come up and talk about the project. State your name, please.
Amar Lopsey. Members of the planning staff, members of the planning commission, my name is Amar Lopsey. I represent Cottage Development, Inc. I'm here with Dr. Lopsey Wala, he's the chief executive officer for Cottage Development, Inc. I'm here with Richard San Luis, who is the proposed general contractor for the project. And we've also invited Mr. Kunsman. He is the traffic engineer that was commissioned to do the traffic, traffic and parking analysis for this project. I want to start with by saying that I was actually raised in this community, and it's very important to me. I spent a predominant amount of my childhood, I attended South Hills High School in West Covina, so I have a good kinship with this area. We did a former project on 1700 West, West Covina Parkway entitled Center Lake Imaging, which was just recently completed, and it gives a testimony to the, the attention we put to our projects. We feel that it was a beautiful addition to the city, and I hope you do as well. The project we're proposing here today is a medical development, a 14,500-square-foot facility. We're essentially repurposing a warehouse, an industrial warehouse, that has been in existence for over 15 or 20 years. We're not asking for a change in zoning, we're not asking for a change in use, the medical use is permitted under the NRC designation. We feel that the medical use is consistent with the area. There is a home health center that borders on this property, there's a Davida or Covina Dallas Center within minutes, there's a Kaiser, Citrus Valley Hospital's very close by. So, you see that this area is becoming a hotspot for medical activity. We want to do something that's harmonious to the community with appealing architecture that can possibly enhance the values of homeowners around us. We want to comply with all the reasonable requests and recommendations from planning staff and city council, and to make this project the best for this community. We complied with all the requirements thus far, including a extensive traffic and parking analysis. So, we ask that you approve our project, and we'll comply with any reasonable request. Thank you.
Do you have any questions of?
I do.
Okay. Commissioner Menefee?
I noticed a pharmacy as part of your structure. Is that pharmacy available to people who are not there to see medical doctors for another reason?
That, that's correct. It's open to the public, and we accept non-insured patients as well, so.
Could I ask where your clientele will, will come from?
Predominantly this area. We're, we're looking to provide general care, so primary care services. We have a pediatric suite that's proposed and urgent care, so it caters to all ranges, all scopes of services.
So, it's not, it's not necessarily a referral from like county or someplace else?
That's, that's not, that's not correct. Patients don't require referral to go to our facility.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Castle?
As far as the urgent care, what hours will the urgent care be open?
We haven't defined the scope of the urgent care. Typically, it can be available 12 to 5, 12 to 6. We haven't yet, you know, set a, a strict time schedule in front of us yet, yeah.
Commissioner Ellis?
That was one of the questions I was going to ask you about the urgent care. Also, another question I had in mind is that I saw the blueprints that you had out, I lay them out and I saw them. I didn't see whether you're going to have a lab there, is your, are you going to have a lab?
It's not on the proposed set of plans, we don't plan to do a lab.
And what hours is this going to be open?
Typical medical hours are 9 to 5, close for lunch for about an hour. We don't try to stray from those general hours.
Okay, thank you.
And the question I asked earlier, how many employees do you anticipate having there?
About 12.
12 for the whole facility, including doctors and everybody?
You want to break it down? Yeah, I'm going to bring Dr. Lopsey Wala up to the podium.
Okay. I'd like to know because of the parking situation. Sure. State your name, please.
Well, my name is Dr. Lopsey Wala. I've been in this community for about 35 years. I have been a part of this community for 35 years. We have built several similar buildings in Covina, West Covina area. We are trying to confirm with the community rather than stick out as a sole point. This particular location, it is industrial, they make engine, rebuild the engine, transmission and other things. On the contrary, this is a, a very quiet business venture here, starting from about 8:00, 8:30 to about 5:00, 5:30, 6 o'clock. Not everything we're going to run at the same time. We have pharmacy, and by state law, we cannot own the pharmacy, pharmacy has to be a different owner. And it is on the, on the orange side, so that particular traffic would not come on that side, even if the public comes from outside. Similarly, we also have a skin and a laser clinic. Naturally, you know, you may get two or three or four patients a day, that's probably considered very plenty, because laser and skin removal and this and that. Besides that, we have an urgent care center, which we will be starting when nobody else is around, like 12 to 6, people have gone for lunch or something. We have a primary care, and a primary care, it, it, it all depends, because we have several, two or three physicians can work at the same time. What we had decided is not to interrupt or disrupt the, the community. The parking lot on the Lang Avenue, it is exclusive for employee. This used to be, I, I don't know if some people would know, Dr. Forrest Tennant's office here before, this particular Lang Avenue, Forrest Tennant is a friend of mine, so we talk about it. Historically, he used to do with the drug addicts and everything else. What we, special precautions we took in, in olden days, there was an exit on the Herbert and, and very close to the Herbert. What we did was we kept it very close to Garvey, so the people will enter and exit from there, they would not even come very close to Herbert. So, that's a precaution we took. Another thing is, right now, on the main building, there, there is a sort of wrought iron gate and everything, as we're going to take that out, let, make it like, right now it looked, almost looked like a prison, you know, big, big fencing all around and everything. We are going to put it in such a way that building looks really nice, predominantly most on the orange, orange side, because orange side is mostly a commercial side. If you really look at it, this is in the continuity of the commercial structures. There is a, a big, sort of a commercial center, behind then, there is, there is a radio, stereo store there. Next to, just behind me or south side of us, is also a home health care and everything else too, that, that too. So, we are just right there and there. The most important thing is we like to leave the building the way it is, because I think it is better to use the resources what they were already laid in, and, and that's the reason why we selected this building. There's ample parking, and, and there would not be any disruption of the community. On the, on other side of the Lang Avenue, it's not depicted, there's a hotel or motel there. I'm talking about on, on the left side of, of that, there's a hotel and model with a big wall on that side. On the main building, on the residential side, there's a six-foot wall. We also going to make sure that our illumination of parking lot will have a low directional light, it will not flood up the whole community with the light, you know, that kind of thing. So, our light will be a little bit low and, and a focused light rather than, rather than spreading light. So, we do understand that people are living this area, and we want to make sure that live with harmony and, and, and conformity that we do not disturb the people. So, if you have any question, I'll be more than happy to answer this. The other project we have done is in Covina and, and Holland Beck and Arrow, another one we did on San Bernardo, there's one on Badillo, the, the one you see Center Lake right on, very first building, 1700 West Covina, we just finished, and we'll work with the staff, we want to make sure that we follow all the codes and everything else. We like to beautify our building in such a way that we all could be proud of, because we are the residents of this community too. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Questions? Okay. That'll close the, open the public testimony. Does anybody want to speak in favor of the project? I have one card here from Chris Kavanaugh, I'm not sure if he's for, or she's, he or she is for or against?
Against.
Against? Okay. All right. Geneva Wood, you're up once before. Please state your name.
My name is Geneva Wood, I live at 218 North Lang. This gentleman said he had lived here for 35 years. We've lived on Lang for 47 years, and we have other neighbors who have lived there longer, and it's been a wonderful little street, and I, I believe it was said that there would be 415 cars coming by there each day, and it's not going to impact the traffic. I don't know who the traffic analysts are, but I don't believe that for a minute. And people go, I can just see them going up and down the street, speeding past our street and, and parking, you know, everywhere, and, and I, I definitely think that any variance for, again, for the, I can't think, the plants and so forth should not be given. This should be made as beautiful as possible, and the, the pretty parts shouldn't be reduced, they should be expanded if anything. So, I am totally against this.
Thank you. What was the traffic? What are you talking about? In favor, she didn't say, okay. Did you want to speak in favor of the project? I'm sorry, I didn't know that, I didn't have a card.
Hi, good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. I'm Paulina Morales, and I'm with the Community Development Commission. I'm here this evening to speak in favor of this project. The CDC has been working with the applicant in converting the former bank building at 1700 West Covina Parkway, the Center Lake Imaging Medical Office. And as they've proven to build quality projects, I hope you will follow staff's recommendation and approval.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in favor? In favor of the project? Okay, did you fill out a card? Okay, you know what, I'll call your name in a minute. Okay, we had Geneva Wood. Paul Lozano?
Hello. I am a homeowner living on Lang Avenue. I'm here today to oppose the current medical building and parking lot on Lang Avenue. It is bad enough with the current buildings on our street, we are already suffering from strange people in our neighborhood, which has caused our mail to be stolen and increased excessive speeders on the block. I have also had an incident that the police had to be called out to my home. Since our houses do not have sidewalks, people visiting the current office buildings are parking in front of our homes, lying on lawns and drinking alcohol like if it was a park. They are also leaving trash, dirty diapers, et cetera. I've also had to go down to the post office because of cars parking in front of my home. The mailman left me a slip stating that my mailbox was being blocked by cars that were no longer, that they were no longer going to deliver my curbside mail. I had to inform them that I had no control of people parking in front of the mailbox. I understand you want to put a parking lot, but the majority of people don't like to park in the direct sunlight. People look for shaded places like under trees that are currently in front of our homes, which means the current situation, situation will not stop, and in fact, will increase because with the medical building, there will, there will be more people coming and going on the block. Increasing stra, increasing traffic, stealing of our mail, speeders, which may jeopardize our children in the neighborhood. We are also going from the current home security systems to cameras being installed around our homes. Our homes are supposed to be safe haven for us with the current situation, by approving the medical building, the traffic will have us stressing every time we leave our home. And this could possibly decrease the value of our homes due to the traffic possibly calling the police to our homes from stolen mail or houses being broken into. Please help us keep our neighborhood safe and traffic free. And also, I'd like to bring up that they've mentioned hours that they're going to stay open. Is there going to be any ambulance servants, services there since they have urgent care? What are the health hazards, your biohazards? The parking lot they want to install, is that going to be under 24-hour watch? Because with an open parking lot, you're going to invite all the weekend revelries there. And that'll be it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Carol Graves?
Good evening, and thank you for allowing us to speak. I have been living on Lang Avenue since 1947. My dad built the house there. My husband and I bought the house in 1966. Our neighborhood, I'm sure that some of you have probably driven into the neighborhood, hopefully, to see what it's like. It's a very well-kept neighborhood, and we have had problems before. I can remember the DMV at the end of our street, and when it was time for renewal, when everybody renewed at the same time, we had to keep our children in the house, we couldn't allow them out of the house. Obviously, I don't have children at home anymore, but there is such a distressing thing to me to think that we're going to have extra strangers in our neighborhood. We already have problems that Paul described, we have dirty diapers already, and people just throw trash out. And our neighborhood is one of the last areas that is kept up very nicely in our area. I obviously have been a resident many, many years, so have seen many changes, and this change I do not wish to see, and you wouldn't want it in your neighborhood. And if you stop and think about all of the medical buildings that we have here in West Covina, we visit quite a few doctors, and say the Maxim Building, it has lots of empty places in it. The building on the corner of Merced and Sunset, there's empty places there. There's lots of medical buildings in our area, and we don't need another one. So, please consider turning this proposition down. Thank you.
Thank you. Cynthia Esquivel? Did I pronounce that right?
Hello, my name is Cynthia Esquivel, and I live at 223 North Lang. I've been living on Lang for 30 years this year, and I've never seen so much traffic in the last 10 years like we have now. We are getting these big trucks that are coming down our residential streets. We just had our street stud not too long ago. Now, we're getting these big trucks from this building, along with the St. Clair or the paint shop, along with the sleep, sit and sleep, and they're coming down Lang. My understanding is trucks that weigh over a certain amount of weight are not supposed to be driving down residential streets. We're getting a lot of more traffic, like when there's accidents on the freeway, they're coming down Lang. So, with this new proposition that they want to be, bring another medical center, I agree with Mrs., with Mrs. Graves, that, you know, we have more than enough medical facilities in West Covina, and I feel that West Covina, that medical centers do not belong, even though it's a commercial, little commercial piece of property, should be in a residential area. Garvey has, is very quiet, I mean, with the exception of a couple of hotels there that, you know, have their, their rowdies, but buses, the, the school buses come by, one bus comes by to drop off our kids from Montevista, yeah, yeah, Montevista, and comes racing down the street, I have to call the district and report it. So, we don't need a lot of this stuff. I've had my mail stolen a couple of times, and again, the post office complains about people parking in front of our mailboxes. So, at this, at this time, we don't need this. We, we don't need any more traffic than we already have, and I certainly don't want anybody parking in front of my street or across the street, not knowing who's there. I mean, we should know who parks on our streets and feel safe that we know it's our neighbors, and not somebody that's going to be parked there overnight or coming in and out of our, our neighborhood there. And I would hate to see a block, somebody come up, suggest, well, we'll put up a barrier, because I heard that once before, is that they were going to put up a barrier. We don't need a little cul-de-sac. We don't need a little cul-de-sac there. We need to go up and down our street. And we need to tell our people that live or work in that little shopping center that if they're going to have these big semi trucks or big trucks come by, that they should not be rude to us. I had one tell me, I was sitting there reading the paper in the middle of the street, and I asked him to please move. And he told me, "Go around." I said, "Excuse me? I'm not going around your truck. You're on a private street. You need to get your bleep out of the way. Now move on. You're causing traffic, has a traffic problems here." So again, I'm totally, totally against this. And I took some time off, you know, to come and speak for the first time with the city council. Never bitched or complained about anything. But this, I don't want. I really don't want it. That lot has been vacant for fifteen years. And it's, nobody's done nothing. I even have to call the city, "Will you come cut the grass? Will you come fix the fence?" So let's put something else that'll benefit us in the community than another medical center. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Chris Kavanaugh?
How do you guys all doing?
Good, thank you.
I've been a resident of West Covina for fifty-eight years. Got married in West Covina, bought a house in West Covina on Lang Street, two-thirty-six North Lang. I live across the street from what is Mr. Lang's old property. It's a big old ranch, oranges, everything. I'm sure you've guys seen it. But our street now is getting out of control from what's going on down the street. I don't know what can be done with it, but I surely don't want this going on down there. Because like everybody says here, and this is my community, they all say the same thing. We have strangers parking in our streets. We have people blocking our mailboxes. It's not right. Lang Street has been here since day one. We really, really don't need it. You've got levits, empty. Put a medical office in there. You've got hundreds of empty, empty buildings around here. Put it over there. Why ruin a community that's been around for fifty, sixty years? You know, what are you guys going to do when the freeway comes in? What are they going to do down there? No one's heard what's going to go on down there. That's going to change things, too. You know, we just want our private little community. Been there a long, long time. I'm sure you guys all have heard of Edna Glassburner. You know, she's the one that's been on that street for sixty years. We don't want it. No one in this community wants it. You know, how many employees? How many more cars? What are they going to do at the end of our street? It's going to be another empty building after five years? You know, we've already put up, how are you going to put up? How are you going to build something like this when you've got that paint store right there that drives semis down there? I pulled over a guy the other day going down my street, sixty-foot semi. And I go, "Sir, you know that's a five-hundred-dollar fine?" He goes, "I don't care." Because he didn't want to turn around. He didn't want to deal with it. Sit and sleep. We have trucks up and down it all the time. The YMCA that's right there, they've actually hit my boys back. Well, this is fifteen years ago. When my boys were backing out of my driveway, they slammed into them. You know, something's got to be done around here. And I know that the freeway project, that's going to change all kinds of stuff down there. Right? So I don't know. I would like to keep the community the same as what it is. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the last of the cards that I have. Anybody else want to speak on it? Come on up. I ask that you fill out a card. When you get done, please state your name.
My name is Fernando Ochoa. Good evening, gentlemen, ma'am. I've been on Lang for about twenty years now. I'm a Los Angeles police officer. And one of my duties is, as a senior lead, is I deal with quality of life issues. And this is what we're talking about for our street. I appreciate all the businesses that he has created and all the monies he's brought in for the city. But he's brought them into areas that don't impact the neighborhoods. And that's what this is going to do. It's going to impact our neighborhood. He mentioned urgent care. We all know urgent care is for off-hours assistance. He checked some of the urgent cares around here, and they're open till midnight. And that's what I'm afraid what's going to happen on our street. Couple of days ago, or a month ago, I had to call West Covina Police for a drunk man on my lawn from down the street. And it's one of those things that we're trying to deal with in our community is quality of life. The other places he's built in other areas that don't affect neighborhoods. And unfortunately, this is going to affect our neighborhood. I raised three children on my, in my house. And I know there's some other families that are even closer to this location. And again, it's about quality of life. And that's what we want to preserve on our street here on Lang. Thank you.
I have one on the card, Rebecca Urick. Did I pronounce that right?
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Rebecca Urick. I've lived on one-four-five North Lang Avenue. My parents bought it when I was born. So we've been there a long time. I was raised there. I grew up in that house. I've always felt safe in that house. Now I've got two little girls that I'm bringing up in that house. And I want to keep them safe. I want them to feel safe. I know it wasn't discussed, but on that corner, Lang and Herbert, that's where the bus picks up my kids every day. And that's where it drops them off every afternoon. All the other kids in the neighborhood get picked up on their bus and dropped off on that corner. It just doesn't sound like a good idea to me. I don't want it. I want to feel safe in my neighborhood. I want them to be safe. We used to be able to play and run around on that street, and we can't now. They've asked for a couple deviances from the landscaping and the parking. Right there, we should shut it down because those twelve parking spots are going to be in front of my house. And they're not going to be able to play. They're not going to be safe riding their bikes because they can't see because there's cars parked. I'm completely against it. I just wish you would please look at it really closely and think about the neighborhood that it's going to impact. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Ladies and gentlemen?
Please state your name.
Jose Mora. I'm at Jose Mora. I'm at seventeen, two-seventeen North Lang. I've been there for seventeen years. All I could say, my neighbors have already spoken everything that I could have said other than by what the doctor here says that his employees. I just see our neighborhood becoming a parking lot. I have the little kids, and if something was to happen to any of them because of his establishment, I just want to know who to sue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Come on up. Would you please fill out a card, please, for us with your name, sir?
I did, sir.
Oh, did you? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Annette Morales, and I live at one-three-nine North Lang, which is going to be right next door to this facility. I really am against this project because since living on Lang, it's such a quiet neighborhood right now. And it's, even though we have sit and sleep and we have other businesses around, it still has maintained its quiet, peaceful community appeal. With this project, I could just imagine how many people are going to be coming in and out all day long. There's going to be diapers and trash on our lawn, just like another community service agency was there in the same building. And we had so much, so many problems with them just hanging out and just throwing things on our lawn and making our neighborhood very unsafe. I used to see people coming in and out at all, even in the evenings, when it's supposed to be closed. Another thing I anticipate is whenever there's a parking lot and whenever a business closes, that just brings trouble because a lot of, you know, kids, young kids around the neighborhood, you know, teenagers could go and park there, smoke there, you know, drink there. So, you know, I really feel that this should not be put in a residential area. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Come on up. Please state your name, and if you will, fill out a card when you're done.
I'm Robert Kunsman of Kunsman Associates. We looked at the traffic for the site. And I just wanted to discuss the quality of--
Are you speaking in favor? You're going to give a traffic reporter?
Well, I'm just, I wanted to talk about quality of life, traffic volumes.
As far as in favor of the project?
Yeah.
Okay, let me finish. If there's anybody else against.
Okay, sure.
Anybody else against? Okay, come on back up, sir. I'm sorry.
I just wanted to go over the standards for quality of life from a traffic point of view. A two-lane roadway typically handles about twelve thousand cars a day. In a residential area where driveways actually access the roadway, they take that down to about twelve hundred cars a day. With the projected project, we are a maximum of six hundred and fifty-two cars a day south of Lang. That would be with the cars that would utilize the off-site parking lot. That would be a total of six fifty-two. The actual intersection of Lang would have about four hundred and eighty-two cars. So it's about a third. The intersection of Lang is about a third volume of the quality of life standards for a residential neighborhood.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to come up and speak again?
I heard the concern from one of the nearby neighbor saying that there are going to be a speed out of control. We have taken that into particular consideration. We are putting a four-way stop. On the contrary, the traffic would be more regulated than before because there are going to be a four-way stop at a junction of Lang and Herbert. Another thing is, right now, what you are hearing is a complaint even before we moved in. Here, what we are doing is we are adding forty more parking, which nobody is using it because we have another lot where we're going to be using forty parking. What I like to tell them that, I think the thing's going to be better rather than worse. Because right now, you know, people are parking in front of the houses and a mailbox and everything else because there's not enough parking. We are almost more than doubling up the parking. Another thing is, we are going to be putting Orange Avenue as a main address. People will be entering from there. All the patients will be coming from that side and leaving from that side, too. Lang Avenue is only for employee parking, employee parking only. So I think, I know they're scared because a lot of people are kind of parking in front of the houses. But I think the thing's going to be better with us moving in. Right now, it's almost like an automotive factory, you know, rebuilding the engine and transmissions and whatnot. We have not occupied the space right now, by the way. Thank you.
Question, sir? Question? Are you saying that the additional parking lot is only going to be for employees?
Yes.
Only for employees?
Additional parking lot will be employed. That means they'll be coming from that side. All the thirty parking, we'll be putting a sign for patients only on the premises. So we, our project is in two parts. One is the main building, and one of these is a parking lot. On a main building, we will be putting a sign there, patients parking only. Because that, and customers needs to be closest to the business. Employee will be coming on Lang Avenue. They will come in the morning, go for lunch, or stay on the premises, and go home in the evening. And I think this is what we intend to do. Thank you.
One other question. What are your urgent care hours going to be?
We don't even know for sure we're going to come at urgent care. This is an express care. The new term coming out, this is not an emergency room, if you are confusing with. This is a doctor's office at odd time. When, at the lunchtime, our regular office is closed, then we're going to be open from twelve to about six o'clock because some people might come a little bit late from the job. So we extend until about six o'clock. Maybe, you know, so by the time, you know, they wrap up everything else and go, maybe six, six-thirty.
So after six o'clock or six-thirty, there won't be anybody there to take some of the--
Well, pharmacy may stay open on one. Pharmacy is going to be on Orange Side, the pharmacy.
For what hours?
The pharmacy may stay open till seven o'clock, eight o'clock. But that, it's on Orange Side only. And pharmacy only occupies about maybe twelve hundred square feet.
I understand it, but what about urgent care?
Urgent care would be, what hours you talking about?
Yes.
By six o'clock, six-thirty will be done, six o'clock.
And will there ever be any ambulance service coming in there?
Pardon?
Will there ever be any ambulance service coming in there?
It will not be unless somebody has a heart attack who's coming to see the patient. Not, this is urgent care. Do not confuse with the emergency room. This is a doctor's office at odd time. The doctor is not available.
Right. I just wanted to clarify for the audience.
There will not be ambulance run.
Okay.
Unless somebody has a CPR, I mean, unless you have a cardiac arrest or something.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Are there any questions? While he's up, anybody? Okay, thank you, sir. Commissioner Valas?
Yeah. In regards to the medical building. You know, that was what I used to do before. I used to be a bilingual interpreter for medical field. I work at hospitals. And what I can see, I do respect everyone's opinion. But what I can see is that you're mistaking the type of people that will be walking into a medical building.
Commissioner Valas, could I ask you to hold that till we have commission discussion?
All right.
That's the time to do that, okay?
Thank you.
All right. I saw a hand up over here. Come on up. You have something to say.
I'm a resident also. My husband--
Please state your name.
Francine Lozano. He spoke to you earlier. They're already coming off. You could tell right now as they were talking. First, the one gentleman said that the facility would be open until five o'clock. Now this gentleman came back up, and he said till six o'clock. Then he went to six-thirty before he left, you guys, for the urgent care, after he was trying to avoid answering the question. I want to let you know that it already seems that he's already fibbing, in other words, as far as just so he can get his facility approved. You know more than anybody else. Once the facility is approved, then they start changing their hours little by little. He says, too, about avoiding ambulance service. That's another thing. Urgent care, if the person is very, very sick, you call an ambulance to get sent to the hospital. So there is going to be ambulances ringing their little bell throughout the time. Who knows? We don't know yet how much of it, but it will be done.
Well, ma'am, let me just address that, okay? What he said is they're going to close at five, but it may be another half hour before they clean up and, you know, close the doors. But they're not going to be taking any patients after that time.
So they say. That's what they're saying now.
But if they do change, they have to come back to the city and get approval if they're going to change their hours. They just can't do it on their own.
Are you going to be sending us another letter in the mail stating?
Please, sir.
Are you going to be sending us another letter in the mail stating that they're going to change their hours?
Is that a question, Jeff?
Because we're being--
Hold on, please. Do you ask a question?
I would suggest taking her input and then closing the hearing before we start having a discussion, questions and answers.
Thank you very much. Would you please fill out a card?
Also about the parking lot. He just said that that parking lot that was going to be on Harbor is now for employees only. And that the majority of the people that are going, are going to be going down Orange instead of down Lang. So there's another fib. Come on, you have to protect our neighborhood. That's all we're asking, is to protect our neighborhood. He says he has other facilities on San Bernardino. Go look at those streets. There are four lanes. There's two on one side and two on the other side where his other facilities are. They're not in a quiet, I understand it's partially commercial residential, but that's on that type of the thing. Is he going to put, when you're coming out of Lang, an arrow that says you can only turn right? This way, there's no traffic going left at all down our block? No, it's not going to be done. We have no sidewalks right now. So our children like to play out in the street, and they like to ride their bikes. They're not going to be able to do that. The majority of children nowadays, they're sitting inside the house doing video games. Nothing is old-school anymore, the way you used to go get vitamin D and play outside and exercise.
I know.
That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, anyone else? Okay. I'm going to close at the public testimony and now open up the commission discussion. Who wants to start? Betty?
Yes. Excuse me. As I was saying, I do appreciate your remarks and your concerns. But you know what? Let me tell you. And like I stated, I used to work in the medical field. And like I stated, I used to work in the medical field. I used to be a bilingual interpreter in the medical field and I've worked in many, many medical fields. The problem is that you've had very bad experience with some of the people that are walking in there. The people that come to the doctors for medical care, they're not the same people that you see driving a semi through your street, racing through your streets. They're concerned about their health. So-
This is not, ma'am. Ma'am, excuse me. This is not time for a rebuttal here.
So please, you know, consider this. This is a medical building that would be a benefit for our community. That's it.
Want to do it now, Jeff?
Yeah, I think we knew when we looked at this site that there was going to be some issues, but, and I would say this, that part of the reason we knew that is because there's already an issue there now. The use that's there now, the way the structure is built now is not conducive to being next to a residential neighborhood. And I think the testimony I've heard, that's what the testimony is about, that that building has been an issue. The building's not going to go away and be converted into residential use. I think that's one thing we can all agree on. It's not going to be a residential use. It's going to be some kind of commercial use. The staff's concern in looking at that is when you have a situation where you have a warehouse that has doors that open onto a residential lots, that that is sort of just a problem waiting to occur and probably has occurred in the past if I understand some of the history of the site. So that starts our analysis from there. Some of the other issues that I heard discussed here were that there are parking issues on the street. And I want to take a minute to let Miguel Hernandez from our Public Works Department talk about that because there is an ability for a neighborhood to have street parking restrictions for only residents. And it sounds like that may be something that this neighborhood might be interested in now whether or not this, irrelevant of this building that's proposed or the conversion of the building, because I'm hearing that there's a lot of concern for parking as the situation is now, and that has nothing to do with the application before us. So I want to give Miguel a few minutes maybe to go over how that parking restrictions process
Okay, first of all, I'd like to say that I'll be notifying PD about trucks going through the neighborhood. That shouldn't be. And hopefully they'll go out there and respond.
Can you speak up a little bit, Miguel, please?
Okay, I'm sorry. I'll just get closer. Okay. One mechanism we have that we use for restricting parking in neighborhoods is using a permit parking. It could be different varieties. You could just say just overnight parking or just during the day. And what we do there is we'll take a request from the resident and then what we'll do, we'll initiate a survey of all the residents that are affected by the restriction. And we'll ask them to return a postcard whether they're in favor of it or not in favor of it. And if it does get approved, what we'll do is we'll post no parking on certain hours, certain days with permit. And each resident will receive four free parking permits. And we understand sometimes there is parties that people have during the weekends or weeks, during the weekdays. We issue one-day permits for those, too, so without any costs. So that's an option you guys can use.
So what do we do if the big trucks come by? Do we call you?
Yeah, you can call me.
You can call the Public Works Department, yes. And we can discuss some of those things perhaps after, as we've been, this is a business meeting for the Planning Commission to make a decision, but we're available during the day if you have questions about those things. So that's the process for having parking restrictions on the street. And if those types of restrictions were adopted, then there wouldn't be an allowance for anyone to park in front of the houses that we're talking about here. And that, again, that's not even having anything to do with this project before us. So if there's an issue of concern, I would strongly recommend that the residents talk about that together and see if they can work through that.
I agree.
So that's one issue. And I guess just to wrap up my comments, like I said at the beginning, we knew there was a, we thought there might be a concern here because of the situation, but we don't feel like the current setup with that warehouse bays facing onto residential units is a very satisfactory or appropriate situation now. So generally, warehouse uses are more intense and have more problems with neighboring residential uses than office or medical office. And if the parking problems can be fixed here, then maybe that gets a way towards understanding what the difference in the two situations might be.
It does sound like the key issue. Commissioner Gasolanos?
Thank you. I definitely can appreciate the concerns of the residents, but it seems like there are multiple issues, which, you know, thank you, Miguel and Jeff, for addressing those. We've got Public Works and Police Department issues that are kind of being convoluted into the big picture as far as the semis, you know. Maybe removing the warehouse might alleviate that, but that, like as was stated, is probably more of a Police Department issue if they're speeding through there as far as, just like the stolen mail and diapers on the lawn. I mean, definitely unacceptable, but I think that those are other, have other potential solutions as well as the alcohol people mentioned. I feel that the vacant lot might be more inviting to alcohol use and mischief than a medical office. Now, as far as, I'm going to agree with Ms. Vias, as far as the use of a building for medical, very familiar with medical uses of buildings. I think it brings a better crowd than maybe the residents might expect. So I'm going to opt to ask the residents to give it a chance. And I believe it will ultimately improve the city and the property values and just the general use. And as far as, you know, I think the parking issue, good resolution has been suggested. That's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Menefee?
I don't want to repeat what we've all said here tonight. We do care about our community, but I'm very pleased to see more medical facilities in West Covina. I don't think you ever have enough of that kind of a special organization that helps us stay healthy. I'm also pleased when I went through the architectural plans and visited the site to see what a parking lot can turn into in terms of landscaping and the positive size of that as well as landscaping around the building. So I'm pleased with this project. I'm concerned a little bit about parking and I think we'll have to watch that very carefully. But in terms of the setbacks, that is not a great concern if it's properly landscaped. And it looks to me from all these plans we've been developed that the landscaping is very appropriate for that. The developer's got a big job of public relations, working with that neighborhood, and it needs to come as well from them, and I hope they will realize that. Thank you.
No, not at this time. I agree with my fellow commissioners. All the things that I heard here today are unacceptable. I mean, they're unacceptable for the diapers, the parking, all that, but that's going on today without the medical facility being there. So that's a problem that exists today, not because the medical facility is going in there. And I know for a fact that years ago, Speed Automotive, I think that was the name of the company, was there. And we used to get complaints about cars racing up and down the street and that type of thing. Well, they went out of business and now you have a company in there that does something with lighting and all that, and I think they have quite a few salespeople out and all that, so I'm sure that's why some of the parking is there. So one of the things they're doing to alleviate the parking on the street is providing this parking lot that just sits there dormant and really looks like heck. And like I say, they had a fire there not too long ago because of the weeds that are in there. But some of the other issues about semi trucks and all that, that's not going to change because that semi truck is going to the paint store. And you've got a mattress store, a paint store there, automotive store, they're still going to be there and they're still going to have their business. Now, if they're doing things that are illegal, you know, that we can take measures to alleviate that. They shouldn't have semis going down that street. So that's something we can get in touch with the Police Department to monitor that a little bit. But all, like I say, all the things that I've heard are existing today. And my thought process is in most medical facilities that I've seen around the city, it's a different caliber of people. I mean, these are not going to be Section 8 people that are going to be referred from the county and lounging around. These are going to be regular patients like you and I that go in for medical services. And I just, the hours are not going to be open late at night. The urgency is going to close at 5:00 or something like that. And I have to say, if somebody was having a heart attack, I would hope that any medical facility would help them in an emergency situation. I know if it was myself or one of mine, I'd hope that they'd help, but they're not going to have anybody there to help them, so the ambulances are not going to go there if it's late at night. There won't be anybody there to take care of them. So a lot of the things that you've said, I'm concerned about, but I don't think this medical facility is going to compound that. I think if anything, it's going to alleviate most of those problems. The building is there. It's not going to go away. And right now, it's, you know, commercially zoned for, like I say, lighting and manufacturing and all that type of thing. That's going to cease and desist. I mean, where have you ever seen a medical facility where there's a lot of loud noises going around? It's usually very quiet. And they're going to do landscaping and they're going to have parking, and I think they deserve a chance to go in there. If they don't, you know, go according to the guidelines that we approve and all that, you have every right to come back to us and let us know what they're doing so we can make them stay within the boundaries that they have been committed to. So I'm in favor of the project. I think we ought to give it a chance. I think the neighbors ought to get together to see if we can do something about on-street parking. I know right now on Tuesdays, on one side of the street, I guess, there's no parking for street sweeping, so nobody can park there anyway. So I'm in favor of the project and I'll close the hearing at this point in time. Can we have a reading of the resolution numbers?
Yes, there's two-
Do we need several for the variances or?
There's two resolutions, so it's just two numbers. It'll be 13-5510 and 13-5511.
Do we have to vote on those separately?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, you need to make a motion that includes both.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion for Resolution Number 13-5510 and 13-5511. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion?
You made the motion, didn't you?
I made the motion, okay. Second from Commissioner Menefee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 4-0. This is final unless appealed to the City Council within 10 days of this date. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Good luck. Ma'am, you have the right to appeal to the City Council within 10 days. There's no non-hearing items?
There's no non-hearing items tonight, no.
This takes us to continuation of oral communications. Anybody else want to speak? None? Okay. Commission reports, comments, and miscellaneous items. This is a time when any member of the commission may bring any matter to the attention of the full commission that is within the scope of duties assigned to the commission. Any item that was considered during the agenda is not appropriate for discussion in this section of the agenda. No commission discussion or action can be considered at this time. If the commission desires to discuss an issue raised by the speaker or take an action, the commission may vote to agendize the matter for a future meeting. Any comments? None? Planning Directors' Report?
On the Planning Directors' Report tonight, we do have the subcommittee minutes for the March 26th and April 9th meetings. We provide those to you after the fact so that those who are on the subcommittee know what's going on there. I have just handed out a flyer from a company called Wilmington Residential that is considering developing the St. Martha's Episcopal Church site on Lark Ellen. I don't know that it says that on here, but that's what it is. That and the Dove daycare.
What is it? Lutheran? What is it?
St. Martha's Episcopal.
Thank you.
This is a community meeting that they are scheduling. It's not a city community meeting. It's a community meeting that the Wilmington Residential is scheduled. You're invited to attend. You don't have to attend, but if you want to, you can. If they decide to go forward, it will come before the Planning Commission sometime probably over the next year.
Forty-five single?
We haven't seen the plan as of yet, so.
Thank you. Anything else? City Council action?
Nothing to report on City Council action.
Okay, this brings us to adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned by Commissioner Menefee. Second. Second by, I want to get that changed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.